All right, and also joining us tonight is Ginger Baylor, a familiar face to this board who was recently elected to fill a seat that will become vacant as of January, so we'd like to welcome her back and that's why she is joining us at the table tonight. So we'll jump right in with a pledge of allegiance and joining us tonight is Eli Nizley from Litchfield CLC. Eli is in the 8th grade at Litchfield CLC where he has consistently been on the honor roll. Previously, he attended King Elementary School. He is taking two high school classes this year. He is in the Litchfield Advanced Flyer and he's in the first Litchfield Robotics Club. He will compete with his team for the first time in January. Eli loves to argue with people. In his case, I think that's a good thing. His favorite things to write are argumentative essays. He loves to learn, but in a paradoxical fashion. He loves days off of school. He loves nature because it inspires him to write. In his free time, Eli reads, writes, rides his bike, and plays video games. He's currently working on a novel and competing in this elastic writing competition. Eli has one sister who is his role model. She is currently a senior at Akron Early College High School. Eli is applying for the IB Project Lead the Way and Akron Early College programs. When he graduates, he wants to go to Harvard for law and become a criminal lawyer. After he's been a lawyer for a bit, he wants to run for the senate and then president. Eli loves to work with children in need and volunteers every month at the Haven of Respite. He holds a Sunday school kind of thing with his youth group for the kids there. So let's welcome Eli and let him meet us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the redeemed and the squalid.
Do you want to say who you brought with you today?
Today, I'm with my mother. He's right there.
Always really exciting to see some of our youth that are really just making an impact in our schools and to honor them and to welcome them to share in a board meeting with us. And I think you guys can still remember that to see what we do. So, we are going to dispense with community and school reflections tonight. We have no requests to address the board, so we're going to jump right into recognition starting with the Academic All-City Fall Sports Recognitions. And I believe Mr. Vasaladi is here with us tonight to do that.
As always, we're excited and we're grateful to honor some of our fall sports, all city, excuse me, fall sports and all city academic team members tonight. In competition this fall, we had a lot of good things going on. Middle school level Litchfield was the victor for volleyball, the champion, and then for middle school soccer with Jen and CLC. At the high school level, we had great performances in golf and actually had, for the first time ever, our girls' golf team at North High School this year. Congrats to Coach Jan here for giving that bump in the ass. Very exciting to know. And also, we had girls' tennis competing. We had championship contests in other sports. Volleyball, for example, won by Ellett here in the very last season. And the city championship playoff match, they qualified. Our soccer league titles this year were won by Firestone with Boys and Girls. What am I forgetting? Let's see. And, thank you. In football, we have every season champion Boto. And then the city playoff game was won by East. Two close battles with those two teams. Very exciting. And I think I've mentioned all the fall sports competitively. Now, off the field, of course, in the classroom, even more importantly, we had many members of our all-city academic team. Over 80 in total, we have a few here recognized tonight. So let me call those fall athletes up here. I know we have representatives from most of our schools here. Come on up, ladies and gentlemen. I know you're out there, I spoke with you earlier. Okay, but that's you. Abigail, there you are. We'll have the student athletes introduce themselves, tell you a name, sport play, and maybe post-high school plans if you're so inclined. We are female dominated. These boys on my list, I'm just going to go with them. We'll start with Michaela.
My name is Michaela Donjes. I play volleyball and after high school, I plan on attending the University of Akron for next year.
My name is London Green. I'm a junior. I go to Boto and after high school, I plan on majoring in psychology and minor in French.
Hi, my name is Dana Weasley. I go to Boto. I run post-country. My GPA is a 3.5 and I plan on applying to State of Nevada for engineering.
Hi, my name is England Knight. I go to STEM High School and I'm on the cross country team. And after high school, I plan on pursuing a business degree.
My name is Lara Gibson. I go to Kimmerballville. I play volleyball and... Oh, I want to go to Kent State for a master's degree.
Hi, my name is Virginia Brown. I go to Kimmerballville High School and I want to go to Kent State for a bachelor's degree.
Hi, my name is Abigail Zepansik. I go to STEM, but I actually play volleyball for Ellett. And my plan after high school are to go to Kent State for pre-med.
Hi, I'm Allison Zepansik and I play volleyball and I'm only a freshman.
I'm Candy Majors. I go to Firestone and after high school, I plan to get a sports major degree.
I go to Kimmerballville High School. After high school, I plan to get a basketball.
Hello, my name is Edward Fox. I play volleyball for Kimmerballville and I plan to be in the sports region.
So we did have a couple of students join us tonight. Thanks, guys. Congratulations to everyone here, over 70 more out there amongst our schools or in all-city academic colleges. To do that, I should have said earlier, these student athletes are so busy doing what they do in school and actually create, they're still managing to earn at least a 3.4 GPA for the last grading period in the fall. Many of them are well beyond that. I know there's a 4.7 out there somewhere, but I won't embarrass them. That would be out there. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for all your hard work and thanks to the board for allowing us to recognize them.
Thank you, and thank you to all the students for putting student in student athlete and for this board for supporting and encouraging and recognizing that our students are students first and athletes second. And so thanks to the coaches that helped to reinforce that as well, both on and off the field. Thank you. With that, we are going to continue recognizing a few students. These are the OSBA certificates for Capital Conference Student Participation. I'm going to stand up. All right, so the Ohio School Boards Association Northeast Region has provided certificates of recognition for all of our students and student groups that were nominated and chosen to participate in the OSBA Capital Conference, which I along with several of our board members just recently attended in, just a week ago, probably a week and a half ago, was the statewide capital conference for the Ohio School Boards Association. And at that, there's a Student Achievement Fair. And this is a special honor for those students and those groups that participated because only 100 invitations go out for groups to participate and present at the achievement fair. They set up booths, so there is basically three or so rows of an alley sort of in the exhibit hall where you can walk down and see all of the programming and the different things that the schools or the districts around the state would like to highlight or show off. And so several of our students got to participate, so we want to recognize them tonight. The Ohio School Boards Association Northeast Region recognizes the Akron City Schools College and Career Academies of Akron for participation in the 2017 OSBA Capital Conference in Columbus. And do we have someone here to accept that? Our Assistant Superintendent Helen McWilliam-Spoots. Also, the Ohio School Boards Association Northeast Region recognizes the Akron City Schools One to World with an International Launch Program for participation in the 2017 OSBA Capital Conference. Someone for the One to World. That's our initiative to put technology in the hands of every single APS student, so that was really great. Some of those students brought the devices with them and presented it to everyone who walked by. They were standing out there and grabbing people as they came by and it was really good to see the student investors in all of these groups. For Project Silk Box, for participation in the 2017 OSBA Capital Conference, a STEM project. Karen Gijit. And finally, we had a group of students from the Akron Early College High School Program, student ambassadors that were there to present on Akron Early College High School. Do we have someone for that? So again, we just as a board want to thank everyone that heads up these fantastic programs for our students, highlighting and showcasing so many great opportunities for Akron Public Schools students. I don't think you can find a district around that is as rich and diverse as we are in programming. And it was really fantastic to, again, to see all of the students there presenting on our behalf. They really led the day. And for some of them, this was a very big deal. We saw students who, you know, aren't always able to make it out to do things like that and to be able to put on that APS jacket and to stand out there and greet people and tell them about all the wonderful things in Akron Public Schools was really touching. It was a good, it was a good day, good weekend. All right, and the moment many of you are here for my tonight's meeting is sponsored by LeBron James Family Foundation, Lola and Spencer. All of these wonderful things, we are here to celebrate. Yet one more opportunity that we offer or are going to offer here in Akron Public Schools, and that is the I Promise School. And we are here to present on the master plan. I think you're going to kick it up. So a board member at least on the institute is going to kick that up. Welcome, and for yours.
Actually, it's a instructional policy committee. I'm going to introduce this idea that most of you already know so much about, but we want to talk to you a little bit more about it. Can you interview him? All right, so Alex wants to make sure you can move him up. Innovation is in our DNA at Akron Public Schools. We have a rich history of forging relationships with key partners to drive innovation in our educational services. We are leaders in STEM education with our National Matters Hall of Fame STEM Middle School and High School and Boto-Lu Tech. Art-focused education at Millerstown Performing School for the Visual Performing Arts, our Akron School of the Arts, and arts education K through 12. One's not to forget, we have every one of those schools. Students earn college credit while in high school through Akron Public High School and dual enrollment throughout all of our high schools. Integrated technology, our APS online school, and our Wonderworld devices for all of our students. Creating partnerships to accelerate student learning, the College and Career Academies, reading tutoring, after-school program, and mental health services. Our board and the APS staff are consistently analyzing our student learning data and researching innovative practices to propel our practice. We also prioritize our time and are building relationships with key partners in Akron who share our beliefs about our students and who are committed to accelerating their learning opportunities. After years of working with the LeBron James Family Foundation and with LeBron, we knew we found a partner who shared our beliefs about the endless capabilities of all of our students. We watched them provide extended learning and enrichment opportunities for our students with the greatest reading difficulties. We watched them wrap support around both students and their families. We attended the graduation celebrations for parents who went back to school to get their GEDs due to the foundation's support. We attended town hall meetings that felt like a loving family reunion. We watched our students receive incredible learning opportunities through technology camps and other innovative after-school programming. Not to mention... All those other fun things. Then as those incredible announcements came, where our I Promise students could earn college scholarships at the University of Akron upon graduation in in continuing to reach that. We did the LeBron James Family Foundation with one of the most valued partners we've experienced in our Akron Public Schools history. And as we examined the needs of our students with the largest reading deficits, we knew it was time to step into our APS innovation zone again and explore creating a school in partnership with the foundation. The challenge was to research and design a school that could take the best practices that we've learned from our current innovative practices such as STEM education, integrated arts, business partnerships, Wonderworld computers, and wraparound support such as mentorship. But to take these practices to a whole new level that potentially hasn't been provided before. The foundation and the design team responded with a master plan that is anchored in research. It creates an educational environment for the school that is inspiring for the child and his or her entire family. On behalf of our Board's Instruction Policy Committee, we are pleased to bring to the board tonight the master plan for the I Promise School. And just as an update, the master plan is the strategic plan that will be used to guide us from here on out. We'd like to introduce Keith Winkie from our Office of School Improvement, who has led the design process. The goal of the presentation today is to review the work that has occurred to get to today's proposed IPS master plan and to share the major guiding principles of the school. Keith?
I do want to thank the board tonight for allowing us to share with the community our master plan. I wanted to start off with our district visual. You'll notice there's three focus areas in our district. Rigorous teaching and learning, focus area one. Safe learning centers, two. And then public engagement, three. When you look at our master plan, you'll notice that we were very thoughtful to make sure in our proposal for the I Promise School that we included all three areas. I want to spend a few minutes to talk about our journey. April 11th, as you remember, the board, Mr. James and Mr. LeBron James, all came together for the big announcement committee to looking at potentially opening up a school in Akron Public Schools. From there, on May 23rd, we brought together those design teams that Mr. Mansfield mentioned. We had over 100 teachers, administrators, parents, community members, business partners come together and serve on committees. Everything from HR to instructional logistics, how are we even going to move students around? So they started on the 23rd, but then those teams worked all summer long tirelessly meeting. We co-chaired those teams with the Akron Public School staff and the LeBron James Family Foundation, led those teams throughout the summer. We had a couple of review teams. Many of you were already, were there for our sessions where we got feedback, revised our plan, went back to the drawing board, till we ended up with our draft where we here, where we are now. Midsummer, we did bring on another 120 students, so these will be our first students at the I Promise School. We also, we have not waited to keep our planning process going. Our principal, Brandon Davis, has been traveling all over, looking at schools who are masters in STEM learning and social emotional support. And we're looking at those practices to see how we can implement them in our school. So all that really leads us up to tonight, hopefully getting our final approval for the I Promise School. The master plan has a few major categories. First, the main focus of the master plan was to get our students in one location. Currently, we're serving I Promise Network kids in every Akron Public Schools across the district. So to really hone in on this group of students, we wanted to pull them together in one location. But then on, the master plan goes in to look at our instructional frameworks. So what are we going to do around our coursework, our social emotional learning, our family support plan, and then community engagement. And that was the meat of the work that our team focused on. I wanted to talk a little bit about each one of those areas. You'll hear a lot in the master plan as we move forward about wraparound supports. All of our students in Akron Public Schools benefit from both instructional and social emotional support. But we really want to blow this up in our proposal for the I Promise School and not only bring additional support to our students, but also what can we do for our students' parents and siblings? You'll notice around the room, we have lots of "we are family," so that is the philosophy of the LeBron James program. And that's where we think we'll make a big difference with these expanded wraparound supports. With the curriculum, we are looking at a STEM-based curriculum as well as infusing our board-adopted curriculum and additionally trauma-informed curriculum. So we know that with at-risk students, oftentimes come struggles at home, so we want to make sure that we're addressing the whole child until we can clear off that baggage and so the students are ready to learn. Something that we're very excited about, we're calling the illumination period. In our master plan, we describe the after-school programming. We'll have the ability in our proposal to keep every student after school for an additional hour. And this illumination period will be used for intervention, for enrichment, but then also an opportunity for students to participate in clubs and sports. Also, experiential learning is not something new to the LeBron James students. Each grade level, we go out into the community, into our local businesses, and learn about the world around us and what careers look like in that, in our community. So that's going to be a big part. With the I Promise School, we'll be able to infuse those experiential learning right into our PPLs, which that was much more difficult to imagine when you're across 40 buildings. Extended day and extended year was also a big focus when we were developing the proposal for the I Promise School. We know that we lose, we backslide a little bit in the summer, summer slide we're always talking about. And so in order to help reduce that, we developed a plan for kids to get a little bit more time in school in the summer and then a little bit each day. I'll show you that schedule here in the next few slides. When we talk about the I Promise School, this is going to be big. Next year in our proposal, we're looking at grades three and four, so that will be about 240 students. But then the following two years, we would continue to bring in two grade levels at a time until the 22, 23 school year, when we'll be in full operation with grades one through eight. So potentially, this could be one of our largest schools in APS. The student selection process. We already get calls all the time. How do I get into the LeBron James program? We know that these calls are going to come in fast and furious once this school is approved. Right now, we do focus on at-risk students, so we need to look at our reading data. In Akron, we use several different assessments to identify students who are intensive or So, once we identify students who are intensive and targeted, right now, we look at second graders. Second graders going into third grade, we do a random selection. So these 120 students that we brought in this year, we pulled 15 students from each cluster until we were able to round out that whole class. So eventually, I just showed you the slide where we'll be a one to eight school. Eventually, we'll be identifying students as early as mid-kindergarten to bring into the school, again, based on intensive and targeted needs. We do know that we'll need a plan for attrition. All of our specialty schools have to deal with losing students from time to time, so we will have an executive team made up of LJF partners, business partners, Akron Public School folks to see how do we make sure that we keep our kids and what's that, what's that plan when we do lose some. So here's what our extended year looks like. So we have almost a full 20 days of school starting before the rest of Akron Public Schools, again, to try to prevent some of that summer loss. You'll notice that we kept the instructional days the same. We have 172 days in our regular Akron Public Schools and then IPS schools have 172. The difference is made up in the break, so there'll be instructional improvement days and some time off for students throughout the year so that we end pretty much at the same time. You'll notice May 31st for this next calendar year and our proposal for the IPS school is May 24th. Within our master plan, though, we're working very hard to make sure that learning does happen all summer. So we have several partners already who have agreed to host one-week camps, summer camps that'll be fun and instructional, that'll be open to all students. So we really will, by the time we're done, have a year-round schooling. So we're very excited about that. Here's what our extended day looks like. We know, we know transportation would be an issue, so our logistics team worked tirelessly to try to figure out how do we get all these kids to school. So they came up with a tier-three transportation plan. So after our elementary kids and our middle school kids get dropped off at school, we would have that third round of pickup for all of our I Promise students who live two miles outside of the new school. You'll notice our instructional day then becomes nine to four, and then four to five is that illumination period. And currently, Akron Public Schools and the foundation provides several after-school opportunities for our students. What's exciting about this is we'll now have transportation. So rather than serving maybe 50, 60% of our students, our goal is to serve 100% in after-school programs to meet their needs. I mentioned wraparound supports. So in our proposal, we actually want to include within the school, our brick-and-mortar space, a place for parents to come for support. And in our, in our budget, we budgeted for a family liaison or family resource director to be onsite to help and support our families. We've already started talking with some of our local partners, so we envisioned having some of those Summit County services right here in our ability to take the burden off of our parents, so they can come to school, they can meet with the teachers, they can take care of some other business as well. Here are some of the partners. We have, we have been talking, I should say, the foundation has really been talking to all of their partners. We are so blessed to partner with them because then they bring all of their partners to us. So whether it's financial support, time, or services, we know that we have a lot of support behind us in our proposal for the I Promise School. And that's twins this year tonight. So lastly, I just want to conclude with the budget. So we have put together some numbers. We know that using general funds in federal dollars, it will take about $2.5 million to open up the school the first year. Each year, as we saw... Each year, as we saw that we'll be bringing in staff and increasing our student enrollment, so each year we'll add about $1.5 million bringing on that new staff. Now fortunately, we have grant support and the support of LeBron James Family Foundation, who will be bringing in about a half a million dollars annually for those operational costs. Within our master plan, one of the focus was to reduce class size. So part of that grant money would be used to hire teachers, for reduced class sizes, pay for technology. But rather than me tell you, I actually would like to bring Dr. Michelle Campbell up, the executive director of LeBron. Thank you, Michelle. Michelle, I hope you share with us some of those wonderful things that the foundation has brought in.
Thank you for everyone coming tonight. For LeBron and his foundation, the vision for the I Promise School is so much more than a brick-and-mortar building filled with students. It represents the culmination of his work in helping to educate the youth in Akron. His commitment to helping every single one of its students and their families achieve things they never believed possible. And his commitment to this community that he and Savannah so proudly hold. LeBron's promise to these kids in Akron goes well beyond wearing a band in every single game for them, writing them letters, calling their homes, offering encouraging words, providing meals, school uniforms, grocery grants, brand-new bikes, Cavs games tickets, and an annual family reunion. Most importantly, he's helping to make sure they have after-school support, the necessary mentors and guidance they need, exposure to new career possibilities, a program for their parents to earn their GEDs, and a college scholarship waiting for them when they graduate. All of LeBron's support and resources for his current I Promise students, which I have some here tonight, my Suba Twins, Arshon, Arlissa Parsons, will continue and even increase in the next school year, totaling over $2.5 million in programming, experiences, and support to assist them in their education while helping their entire family work towards a better future. For the I Promise School, the LeBron James Family Foundation will continue to do all of that. But as in everything we'll do, we will dig even deeper. In addition to the full support of this generation's most iconic basketball players, the I Promise School will also have significant financial support from the foundation. The LeBron James Family Foundation has committed to financing critical elements of the I Promise School, including extended day for the illumination period, providing an hour of clubs and extracurriculars for all students five days a week, essential summer programming to continue the students' year-round, learning year-round, additional IPS staffing and a director for the family resource center to oversee the staff and supports being offered, Chromebooks and cases to assist in students' learning, updated technology resources, including new wireless projectors and smart boards for this beautiful building, hopefully. Three weeks of professional development for IPS staff. We know the I Promise School is a big commitment, and by big, I mean monumental. But following the lead of LeBron and Savannah, who never shy away from hard work, the LeBron James Family Foundation is fully committed to doing everything in its power to make the I Promise School a nurturing and supportive environment where our students can thrive. Along with our financial commitment, the foundation also humbly has at its disposal an army of local and regional partners who are willing to help LeBron's kids in any way they can. Raise your signs, my community partners. Because that's what LeBron and his foundation bring to the table, a long-term, deep-rooted commitment to rallying every resource possible around the youth in Akron, and more specifically, his I Promise students and families. We look forward to continuing that work, hopefully with all of your support, the board as well. Thank you.
So next steps, if approved. Before we turn it back over to the board, we've been working hard, but the work's not, the work's not done. So our next steps will be for administration and AEA to work with our bargaining units as we look at this specialty school. And then we hope to be posting very soon, so in December, start recruiting and searching for our teacher positions and other staff positions. So thank you again for allowing us to share our master plan. Thank you, Mr. Miller.
So I just want to say a few things as well. You know, one of the mantras, the main parts of our family foundation is that nothing is given, everything is earned. And I know that this has been a lot of work. This hasn't just been something that's been run together, it's been years of a partnership, it's been months of sign teams coming together. And that is not one of those by the board. We've had a few special board meetings, we've had things coming in instructional policy. It was a very busy summer. People said to us, "Wow, it must be nice in that summer, and the kids aren't in school." So it's been a wonderful partnership as we've moved forward. One of the things I do want to talk about also is sometimes in the community, folks have come up to us and said, "It's great that we're giving that promise school, it's wonderful. Once that's approved, that'll be fantastic." But what about all the other things? And one of the things that I love about this and what we've learned from our college and career academies is we really do learn. It's a lesson that I think Akron Public Schools has always known, where we really learned that the community doesn't stop at the schoolhouse doors. And that one of the things with this partnership and our partnership with United Way and the partnerships that are opening up to college and career academies as well, are going to keep those partnerships built inside our schools. So those family resource centers that you see that we're going to have in LeBron James' Family Foundation's I Promise School is, we're also going to have those working with United Way to provide hubs in all of our schools, where the community can come together and try to find what is most needed here. So in keeping with our theme of not leaving anyone behind, of everyone being included, I just want to assure the community that the foundation and the board and Akron Public Schools have all of our students in mind when we're, when we're looking at this. So excited about everything that we've heard about tonight. And I'd like to make first motion for you.
Second.
We have lots of seconds.
So then we have questions.
So we have a motion and a second on the table for approval of the I Promise School master plan. Comments, questions, or discussion?
Reverend Walker.
Mr. President. We have the board and myself want to thank the staff, the leadership of the LeBron James Family Foundation. Especially want to thank our students and our committees that have gathered together, several board members, Mr. Miller and I, that are part of those committees, other board members, especially our original committee has worked very tirelessly to bring a lot of things together. Finance committee, again, Mr. Miller and I, looking at some of the numbers, because the question is always, how can we afford to do what's being done? I guess the question comes back, how can we not afford to do what we're doing? We are fortunate here in Akron to have a variety of offerings. Mrs. Miller, Mrs. Mansfield, rather, has mentioned to you, all of the wonderful offerings. The I Promise School is just another offering that we offer to our students, especially those students who need additional care, support, and family. And with all of our partnerships, we are able to help those students, help those families. And this is just the beginning. So we're not simply going to need you to be present tonight and to fill this space, but when people question what we're doing, we need you to talk about the good work of the LeBron James Family Foundation, the good work that your students, your children are doing. You are the best spokesperson for what's going to happen in the next few moments, hopefully, to be able to launch this new endeavor. You're going to have to support us, superintendent, the treasurer, who, the treasurer, who makes sure that we crunch numbers and are able to do what we need to do to be able to make sure that we're going to be successful. But it depends on you. We need your constant support. When there's any negativity, there's any question, you're the fine example to say, "It's easy to be done. We want it to be done. Look at me. Look at what we've accomplished." So again, we thank you for your presence. I personally have been touched in a significant way, there are my tenure on the board and working with the LeBron James Family Foundation, sharing the newest activities that they have had, and this is an extremely worthwhile endeavor. Want to thank everybody that's worked very hard, especially Dr. McWilliams-Woods, who, this deals with academics. We have a lot of wonderful support, but we want to make sure our children take advantage of everything that's there for them. And the outcome is that they will be able to graduate from high school, receive that scholarship that's waiting for them at the University of Akron, be successful either in college, a career, or military, and be a productive citizen, especially here in Akron. Thank you.
I just want to add a couple of things. First of all, I want to thank LeBron, Savannah, and the foundation for what you're doing right here with the school students. Very important. He's going to tremendously help our students, so I want to thank them for what they've done. Also, I want to thank LeBron for raising the bar. Our kids don't need the bar lowered, they need the bar raised, because if we raise the bar, they will get up to the bar. So let's, we're going to stop lowering the bar for us and raise the bar, because we know the students can't make it. So that's something I want to thank them for, LeBron and the foundation, for raising the bar. And then last, I wanted to recognize two people who are part of LeBron James Family, family, his father-in-law, who's here, and his sister-in-law, who's here. So I want to make sure they were known as well. Raise your hands. Most of all, I want to thank all of these students, because it's all about you. It's not about any of us up here, we have to forget about sometimes, the parents, who I call us big kids at times, but we have to focus on you guys, because that's what it's all about. It's about you guys, not the fathers. So thank you.
And I want to just take a minute and same thing, echo what Mr. Alexander was saying, but these kids have the greatest opportunity ahead of you if we go through with this. So be thankful, but I will expand a little bit, because I think it actually does affect the innocent misparents. The LeBron James Family Foundation has made sure that some of these parents go back and get their GEDs. So this is improving the whole community. This is, this is great for everyone. This is fabulous for the kids, but it's wonderful for the parents who are getting their GED and being able to do something additional with their lives too. So I just want to thank the opportunity to everybody. Thank you.
And I just want to add, or say, excuse me. What, what we're, what's being proposed here this evening, as far as extended school days, extended school year, the wraparound services, it's, it's unique for Akron, I believe. It's not unique in the education world, but there's a table full of lifelong learners up here. We got back from Catholic conferences, our president talked about earlier this evening, and that's all about us learning best practices in other school systems. And everywhere we go, when we go to breakout sessions on extended school day, extended school year, wraparound services, there's statistical data out there that proves it helps. So we're not going into this blaring in any way, shape, or form, this is not unique. Other than, like I said, it's unique for the city of Akron, Akron Public Schools, but very confident this is going to be a great thing for Akron Public Schools and our students. And not just the students in this building, but the students all throughout the city of Akron.
So I too want to just say thank you to LeBron James and Savannah James, and not just for my Coke and my milkshake, and this one since I had first, but for their commitment to this community and to the kids in Akron Public Schools. I mean, it's nothing short of just absolutely phenomenal. And on a side note, I want to wish them luck, and we promise to get you guys out of here so you can cheer them on as they play the 76ers tonight and go for a win. So, but I also want to say a big thank you to Michelle Campbell and to LeBron James Family Foundation, and in particular, too, to their staff. I mean, outside of our Akron Public School staff, I don't know that I've ever met a staff that is as dedicated to their mission as the LeBron James Family Foundation staff. And what a blessing for us that their mission is to support the kids and families in Akron Public Schools. I mean, we truly have been blessed, and we, not a day goes by, I know on this board for many members, that we don't recognize how fortunate we are to have the support of the foundation and its staff and the LeBron James family for our kids. We recognize that and we appreciate that, and we, and we want to say thank you. Reverend Walker has had the best, and this board is working every day to find unique and transformational ways to challenge our kids, to meet the bars, we continue to raise the bar, and as those around us continue to raise the bar. And we're working every day to find options for our kids to raise them up, to lift them up, and give them an opportunity to succeed. So Michelle, to you, to the foundation, to your staff, to the LeBron James family, thank you so much for this. We have a motion and a second. This time, I would like to call, if you'll call, please.
Mrs. Mainsfield.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Reverend Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Walsh.
Yes.
Mr. Alexander.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
On behalf of the LeBron and the LeBron James Family Foundation, we want to say thank you. To formally have the approval and confidence of the Board of Education, our Akron Public Schools means everything, as you guys are the engine that drives so much of the work we are able to do with these students. While we celebrate this monumental vote tonight, we know the real work starts now. We will work tirelessly with the APS staff to bring the I Promise School's groundbreaking vision to life, and we couldn't be more excited to get this process officially started. As you can see on our shirts, and this is the philosophy we bring to everything we do, you make us proud to say, "We are family," and we're proud to be part of yours. do, you make us proud to say, "We are family," and we're proud to be part of yours.
All right, we are going to take, am I okay? of our board business. So, so we are going to take a picture, and you are all encouraged to visit the Swinson's truck on your way out. I highly recommend that we make a motion. Okay, we will call our meeting back to order. And the first item of business is approval of the meeting, regular meeting minutes for November 6, 2017. Do I have a motion? So, I have a motion and a second on the minutes. Any questions or comments? Harry Dunn will call, please.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Superintendent's recommendations?
Mr. President, I have a question for your consideration, 58 personnel recommendations and three additional recommendations on the Personnel Recommendation Supplement. At this time, I would like to pull item 36 for discussion in the executive section, other than that these recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So, I have a motion and a second on the personnel recommendations. Any comments or questions?
Question?
Yes.
Can you explain item number four? Yes, um, so part of our college and career academy program and part of a grant from the GR Foundation is to buy some marketing support for our college and career academies, to market them to the community of our, and so this person's being hired for that position, which is supported with some grant funding from the GR Foundation. Thank you.
I just want to also take a minute. We did ask for her to leave for tonight, so that can introduce her, that she had other family members that she could have moved in. But I would like to let you know that Marcia Coleman is a graduate of the University of Dayton, with a bachelor's degree in Business Administration, a master's in Business Administration with a marketing major. She began career at Bank One, is a marketing analyst years ago, and then went to I Am's company, where she was a marketing specialist, assistant brand manager, and then a marketing major. And following that, she went to work for the Capital Terrace Leadership Center, where she was a marketing manager there. And then her most recent position has been at the Academy, which she currently signed off, she was a director of funding. So she does come to us with all the marketing experience.
Any other questions or discussion?
I just need your comment on item number one, one of the retirements, this is one of these, I'm getting old moments, at Darcy, I graduated high school then. So I guess I'll get to see one more, couple more cargo boat race here, which I love.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Harry Dunn will call, please.
Mrs. Walsh?
Uh, yes, I'm standing on number 57 and 58.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes, I'm staying from item number 12, 47 and 48.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes, I'm standing from items 49 and 50.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes, I'm standing from items 51 and 52.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, I'm staying from item 53 and 54.
Reverend Walker?
Yes, I'm staying from items 55 and 56.
Next, Mr. President, I have a question for your consideration, two motions and eight resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So, I have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Any questions or discussion?
Harry Dunn will call, please. I just would like to hear a full explanation on item number nine, considering the 1003 grant.
The 1003 grant, it had two target areas for our district, data use capacity, and also inclusive leadership development. The focus is on 14 focused buildings. Our focused buildings are the ones that are showing the lowest amount of closure gaps. So in that grant application, those two areas, that's what we focus on. In comparison to the sub-8 grant that we got previous year, two different funding sources, we actually were allocated more money this year, an amount of $817,000 additional dollars for these focused buildings. So that's essentially tied in.
Any other questions or discussion?
I just wanted to congratulate our grant staff on how work they do, but also to congratulate the superintendent, Roger Sisk, again, that we've graduated him, but that was the GR Foundation Glass Half-Ball Award that was awarded to Mr. Miller.
Any other questions or discussion? Harry Dunn will call, please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have a question for your consideration, 17 Business Affairs Recommendations and one additional item on the Business Affairs Supplement. These recommendations are in proper form, and I move their approval.
So, I have a motion and a second on the Business Affairs Recommendations and Business Affairs Recommendation Supplement. Any questions or comments?
I have a question on item number seven, in that if we have increased attendance at the City Series football game, it's costing us more, I would think our ticket sales and other things would have helped offset some of that. Mrs. Walsh?
Tickets are sold at the same price, the dollars are $6, students are $4, regardless of any event we've had, no matter where it's located. In the case of the decision for these flip-overs, the rental rate is flat, but what we do take into account is parking is part of the rental, and it's a dollar charge per car parked for the event, and we can't obviously pay how many people go with that car. So because these hotels regularly, and the City Series sponsorship was so well-attended, they went over the original amount, and proved again that it's hard to ask for the door in their group to pay this way. So that's good thing, 17 people then, you can deal with it. Thank you.
I have, item number one, what is it? Can you explain what that is?
Oh, Karen, okay. No Tree Sword is the company that you approved to take our mail, that actually comes to our building, takes all our U.S. mail, our certified mail, to their location to have it all posted and taken up to Cleveland for re-mailing. They have then sold their in-house mailers to Pitten Hosts. So this is a merger of this company, and I'm just asking that we go ahead and allow the service to continue under the Pitten Hosts, and again, to continue at the same cost. The term is about to end of this contract.
And it also, item number 17, how does that?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Item number 17, how does that work?
Oh, the property. Oh, that's physical therapy and occupational therapy services. Sometimes we need additional help, because our staff is not available, and days are certified substitute people that provide the help is required in student side.
Okay, so that's a part of people are absent, or have to come in, like a substitute teacher in prison.
That's a substitute teacher, but they have to be certified to do these particular therapies in the student side.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or discussion? Harry Dunn will call, please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, I'm standing from item 13, please.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Superintendent?
I just wanted to give a quick update on the status of administrative consolidation regarding 10 North Main. Remember in the previous presentation, I talked about some of the goals, such as providing a one-stop shop for parents, students, staff, improving workplace collaboration and staff development, and also creating a 21st century efficient work environment that is safe, secure, centrally located, and accessible to our parents and residents. So when we looked at the current conditions, conditions of both 70 North Broadway and 65 Steiner Avenue, both buildings over 100 years old, both will require extensive renovations and upgrades in the coming years. We have outdated building systems at both, building automation is outdated. Actually, the elevator at 70 North Broadway has not been working since last weekend, still not working, when I left the office today. And so, you know, just reviewing that, an administrative consolidation makes some sense for our district's future, and that a central location can result in, you know, a leaner central office can result in more resources getting into the classroom and supporting construction. On the options, we explored, of course, 400 West Market, and with approval of the I Promise Master Plan, 400 West Market will serve as the temporary location of I Promise until we find a larger, you know, a permanent home. Kenmore High School, so there's been some discussion about that being used as an administrative facility, but currently is used as a temporary location for the combining Kenmore Garfield program. Then we also looked at, as part of the Kenmore Garfield consolidation, we looked at another property, 2324 Manchester Road, which is the former Akron Baptist Temple. We need about 95,000 square feet. That facility is 265,000 square feet on 29 acres. We've been through that building before, and we would need to demolish a large portion of it, because it's unusable for our needs. We've also looked at a building the off-rent company owns on 1465 South Hawkins. It used to be, I think, a grocery store, is currently being used as a warehouse. It's about 85,000 square feet, but it would need significant renovations. Then we have other empty buildings in APS, such as the former Goodyear Middle School, Goodrich Middle Schools, but those buildings, 901, because of non-use, have working heating systems in them. Headed, of course, at 10 North Main. When we look at the building, 95,000 square feet, parking spaces number at approximately 500. When we toured that building, for the most part, all the floors are completely open floor plan. So it continues from what we've seen with the central location, much more amenable to administrative space versus some of the others. So, you know, tonight, I would just recommend that you allow me to proceed, looking at 10 North Main, our appraised value, in two appraisals, between 8.95 million and 9.4 million for the building only. The parking is actually owned by the city of Akron that surrounds 10 North Main, and it needs, the building needs our current space, needs and adds ample parking. And I do believe that cost savings from the consolidation of both buildings can actually help us pay for the purchase. Right now, we hired Retsel to represent us in contract negotiations, to see if we can come up with a, you know, a decent proposal and agreement. And we'll also ask the city of Akron about options for the parking around 10 North Main, whether it's a lease back, which is currently, I believe, being done, or trade for this other property that we may own. I hope to have a final recommendation for the board to consider sometime by mid-December, so just to provide you with that.
Any questions for the superintendent? Harry Dunn, treasurer? No president's report, no presidential report?
No report.
Committee reports legal contracts and board policy?
Yeah, revised policy, sorry, revised by all, 0147 compensation, revised policy 5500 student conduct, revised policy 5600 student discipline, revised policy 8800 religious pride, patriotic ceremony and observance. This is the second reading of, of period.
Any questions or comments for legal contracts or policy? Finance and capital management?
Yeah, just real quickly, policy 8800, just to make it clear, because in some cities, states, there's been a battle over if public schools can have graduations at places of worship. We here in Akron have had many of our graduations at places of worship, and so there is no conflict with this policy or with the actions of this board, so that the public would know that, you know, we have been using those facilities and that our people, that that's fine to do.
Yes. Just a change in this policy also clarifies, of course, that we can lead students in the Pledge of Allegiance in the National League, but we cannot compel them to participate. Any other questions or discussions for legal contracts and board policy? Finance and capital management?
Our finance committee met, not open until 20th, I'm sorry, on the 20th, with the following members, president, president, at the bar, myself, David James, Martin, Dinlton, and Dinlton. And we will highlight this, the following areas, one, as superintendent just mentioned, the consolidation of administration in our building. And we have had a expert come and share with us about finance, and that was Mr. Martin Fong, from whom financial presented information regarding the borrowing process, cost, and financing timetable to the community for further study, so we would know what we would have available to purchase the building. Mr. Fong has also shared an RFP process and a list of possible banks to issue the RFP. And that's to go through the process of reviewing banks to see which bank we might use to take care and handle our financial business. The second was a banking RFP process. The financial department recently held banking RFP interviews, the finance committee discussed the interviews, and the banks that participated. And we'll be hearing later on what was the final decision as to which bank that we will use. We discussed workforce compensation and health insurance using the Palatine Health Organization. At this time, Mr. Dunn will talk about some other items.
Thank you. We also reviewed the October financial report, which is on board that this evening. Again, of interest were enrollment trends, including enrollment in community schools. It's February review. Actually, I had a brief conversation with superintendent today. We're looking at the community school enrollment that's going down. Mars is making steady, I think we're going to do a deeper dive into group trends and trends in the city of Akron as far as students in the future. Excuse me. Akron Public Schools continues to receive funding from federal state local grants, including many generous grants from community partners. As of today, over $30 million has been received during just this fiscal year, including additional $2,100,000 received in the just passing law. Also, this past month, CFO Ryan Pendleton challenged finance department staff to volunteer throughout the district. The staff eagerly accepted the mission, visiting various departments and buildings to offer assistance as needed. This exercise allowed the staff to better understand the needs of the district and customers served, enabling the finance department to continue to be a valuable resource to follow. And we would like to report out that 100% of the staff participated in this non-manageable And we would like to report out that a hundred percent of the staff participated in this non-handicapary function of this department. I'd say proud of the finance department.
Thank you. Student achievement?
I think basically you already heard most of it.
I think you did yourself.
And I was going to say, it might be nice not to have any more master plan discussions, but there's so much work still ahead of us, but it's all exciting. We're going to see some of the, some of the continued provisions. So it will be exciting for me to have it, Marson.
Thank you. All right, any new business? With that. In pursuit to Ohio Revised Code Sections One-Twenty-One from Two-G One, for the purposes of considering the employment discipline or dismissal of a public employer official of the school district in Revised Code Section One-Twenty-One, One-Two-Two-G Two, to discuss the purchase of, consider the purchaser's sale of property, and looking for a motion to enter into recess in terms of a good session.
So.
Second.
Unlogo please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Brabham?
Yes.